8:00 PM, we'll call the meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Royal?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mr. Cranes?
Here, thank you, Maureen. First item tonight is our student representative report. Rachel, how are you doing on this one?
I'm good.
Good.
Doing pretty well. So, I don't think I've pretty much, but some things that have just kind of been going well at Lincoln, our classes are running a lot smoother than at the beginning of the year when we were all transitioning onto like online methods of giving out like classwork and stuff. And we're transitioning into finals week, which is gonna be very interesting. I'm sure I'm gonna have a lot of online tests, which are gonna be very different from doing it paper and pencil and whatnot. I've definitely noticed that like the efficiency of contact tracing and like quarantining process, like that's become a lot smoother. Ms. Weefal always sends out the emails saying, you know, so-and-so and like cohort A, cohort B, those emails are coming out, and it's definitely nice to have the COVID-19 dashboard to kind of look and see, you know, how many cases, what, you know, what's kind of happening. And I definitely think that the teachers are very receptive to feedback from students. I remember I was at a principal's student advisory council meeting, and we all kind of said the same thing of there needs to be like some sort of general space to go in a Canvas class to find all of our assignments, because each teacher was doing it differently and whatnot. And he, Mr. Asmussen, took that information and he kind of told all the teachers, and now it's a lot easier. And I really think that the teachers, really, they're awesome for just kind of listening and helping us kind of, you know, do stuff better, so, yes. That is, yeah.
Thank you. Glad that things are getting a little better. Okay, the next item is approval of minutes.
Okay, I would make motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 12th and the special Board of Education meeting minutes of October 26th. Sorry, ma'am.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 12th and the special Board of Education meeting minutes of October 26th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, those minutes are approved. Next item is comments from citizens and delegations. Do we have any, Maureen?
None.
Okay, thank you. Now we can move into committee reports. Ed Services, Mary?
Okay, thanks, John. The Ed Services Committee met on Monday, November 2nd, 2020. There are four consent agenda items. Does anyone want any help? All right, then I would make a motion to approve the following. ES1, to approve the proposed World Languages Curriculum Modifications, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year. Jake Wetman, the CII Subcommittee Chair for World Language, explained the proposed changes to us. ES2, to approve the proposed World Language Acquisition in the amount of $42,831.23 to be purchased with WRPS curriculum funds. Jake reviewed the 2020-21 expenses tied to this curriculum. ES3 was to approve the 34 applications to participate in 22 requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the SCM, which is the Start College Now program. And ES4 was to approve the recommended revisions to Board Policy 447.11, use of seclusion and restraint with students, and Policy 447.11, exhibit, notification, and reporting form for physical restraint and/or seclusion for first reading. Danny Scott, our Director of People's Services, reviewed changes being recommended for this for first reading.
I'm second in motion.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ES1 through 4. Could we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Royal?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Maureen?
Okay, then we went on to updates. First one was Innovation Mini Grants for 2020-21. Craig announced the three mini grant award recipients for 2021, and the recipients and their grant categories were Tom Nolan, physical education teacher at Washington, collaborating, community, and connecting; Leslie Anderson, grade two teacher at Woodside, We Belong Together; and third was Sarah Durst, Nicole Gustafson, and Scott Sigourney, grade five teachers at Woodside, Passions Project, and Genius Hour. So, number two was, or B was, new course proposals and current course offering revisions. In accordance with Board Policy, a number of course proposals and modifications are being brought through the committees, for the committee's consideration. The proposals have been reviewed and discussed at relevant building level leadership committees, as well as a Council for Instructional Improvement Committee. The course revision requests and results from the CII Committee Meeting Discussion of October 7th were discussed by the committee. The next step in the process will include having the course proposals undergo an advisory vote by the CII Committee at an upcoming November meeting. The proposals will then be brought back to the Ed Services Committee in December 2020 for possible approval. Number three, Lincoln High School traveled to France. World Language Teacher Justine Harvath has decided to postpone the student trip planned for France during the summer of 2021 to summer 2022. This will allow more time for countries to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic and for promotion of the trip to interested students, and allow them ample time to begin saving and fundraising. And last, we had virtual student enrollment updates. Central Oaks Academy and Lincoln Virtual School enrollment numbers as of October 26th, 2020 were shared. Virtual parents were recently notified that beginning November 2nd, 2020, transitions from virtual back to in-person learning at students' home schools will only be allowed at the end of the trimester unless there are extenuating circumstances. This is the most natural time for such a change to occur, and will ensure stability and progress monitoring for all students. And with that, I move to approve the minutes of the Ed Services Committee Meeting of Monday, November 2nd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Ed Services Committee of November 2nd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, those minutes are approved. Next, we go to Business Services, John.
Thank you, John. Business Services met on November 2nd, and we called our meeting order at 7:11. We had no public comment, and out of our meeting, we have four consent agenda items. Does anybody want anything to add? Okay, hearing none. Committee recommends, and I move, a motion for BS1, that the purchase of Excelsis Educational Center Virtual Curriculum, a total cost of $28,300 for Lincoln High School and Central Oaks, be recommended. That software is because of the, it's providing additional seats because of our increased virtual presence. It's a split of 60% for the Lincoln High School and 40% for Central Oaks. BS2, committee recommends, and I move, that we approve the proposed $10,000 payment to the Boys and Girls Club to provide service director for teens as part of behavioral and mental wellness grant be recommended. This is the basically position at the Boys and Girls Club that Andy would hold, and we are, of course, with COVID unclear at how it's gonna actually work out as far as how much it will touch our middle school students, but the concept is good, and as Craig explained, it's money well spent for our kids in our district and working with the Boys and Girls Club. Also, was discussed that if in future years, if the grant dries up or disappears, we have the possibility of using some fund, maybe funds to continue that work with the Boys and Girls Club. BS3, committee recommends, and I move, that we recommend the proposed three-year memorandum of understanding for audit services to be provided for fiscal years 2021, 2021, 22, and 22, 23. This is the auditing group that Dan's been using, and with Dan retiring this year, he thought it'd be good to have some stability in the auditor, with our auditor, and because he's been happy with his auditor and been working with us, and working with our people and doing a good job for us. That would be a 3% increase for the next three years. That was part of that one. And four, committee recommends, and I move, the motion to recommend that a proposed other post-employment benefit investment policy be recommended for approval to the board. And this is a policy that was put together to give some guidelines on how to invest our open monies. It was recommended by our new financial group that we had to switch to, because the old group would no longer handle anything under $25 million. That is our recommendation, or I move to recommend the four consent agenda.
One quick modification, and I apologize that this was missed. On the minutes, in addition to the motion, it should be a guideline rather than policy, because it's not, it's an internal guideline for the business office that will outline how funds are invested when we have that ability. It's not really relevant to be in the policy manual itself. So, under D, it should be other post-employment benefit investment guideline approval. And then in the motion, it should be other post-employment benefit investment guideline be recommended for approval. And I'm sorry that it passed through that way. It is titled appropriately. And the gold sheet is now the updated sheet from Dan. There were a few minor modifications. You guys should have had a copy of the gold sheet. I didn't get your spot.
So, get rid of the green?
The green is gone. The gold is what it's gonna be. Yeah?
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ES1 through 4 with the suggested modifications before. Could we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Royal?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
And then the remainder of our meeting was some updates, or one update, which was again software for getting more seats in our virtual program. With that, I move the minutes for November 2nd to be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Services Committee of November 2nd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, those minutes are approved. Thank you, John. Next is Personnel Services, Andy?
Personnel Services met last Monday, November 2nd. Meeting was called and ordered at 7:12. There was no public comment, and from that meeting, we have three consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the five support staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one professional staff early retirement. Three, the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the one support staff resignation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, to approve ES1, 2, and 3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
And then we had an update on the 2020-21 open enrollment update, and the best thing come out of that is we are making a little bit of money this year. We have two more coming in than going out, so that's a positive for us. And with that, I move that the minutes from the November 12th meeting be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Personal Services Committee of November 2nd, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, those minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Next item, agenda referrals, information request. Does anybody have anything to add? Okay, let's move on to legislative agenda. Troy?
Thank you, John. So, this month, it's a later month on looking at policy, but we do have some referendum results to take a look at, as well as some election results from last week to take a look at as well. And then we'll end by taking a look at leadership elections and look at the composition of the 21-22 legislature. So, I'm gonna start with the policy pieces, and then we'll get to some election results. Coming out of DPI, Wisconsin is to receive a $10 million federal grant to expand student mental health services. DPI received a federal grant award to aid Wisconsin schools in expanding, excuse me, priority areas in student mental health. Through a competitive grant process, Wisconsin was one of six states to receive funding from the U.S. Department of Education in early October. The federal grant totals $10 million over the course of five years, and will fund the DPI's School-Based Mental Health Professionals Federal Grant Program. WASB is beginning to provide complimentary monthly webinars to keep members up to date in terms of legal and legislative topics. They held their most recent one a few weeks back. It's my understanding that they continue to hold them in the coming months, and they are posting the full recordings of their legislative and legal topics on the website for future sessions, as well as past sessions. Another policy piece, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corp. is now accepting applications from school boards for Fab Labs grant program. This provides funding to help build or expand Fab Labs. WEDC expects to award grants to up to 20 districts, and the deadline to apply is January 8th. Some of the things they're going to be looking at in awarding these grants is they're awarded through a competitive process, and applicants will be evaluated based on the readiness and long-range planning, curriculum, business, community partnerships, financial need, as well as looking at the previous awards. Now moving to the legislature, the Task Force on Racial Disparities held their first meeting, and will split into two subcommittees going forward. This task force, co-chaired by Jim Stanky and Sheila Stubbs, held their first meeting this past week and split the task force into two subcommittees, and one of them will be focusing in part on education. According to wispolitics.com, one subcommittee will focus on law enforcement, policies, and procedures, while the other will examine education and economic development. The chairs said that committee rosters will be released soon, and the task force will meet again in the next couple of weeks into November. And WASB will continue to monitor any K through 12 developments that the task force will bring forth, and the full meetings are on Wisconsin High, past and future meetings for that task force. Moving on to some election results, based on unofficial results, Republicans have maintained strong control of both the state senate and state assembly, but did not win enough seats in either house for a two-thirds supermajority. Republicans picked up a net of two seats in the state senate, and Democrats defeated two Republican incumbents in the senate, in the state assembly. Currently, as it stands, GOP majorities stand at 21 to 12 in the state senate and 61 to 38 in the state assembly. Detailed statewide results are available on wispolitics.com, but for our area, all incumbents retained their seats. Senator Testan was reelected, as well as Krug and Nancy Van der Meer in the assembly as well. And the federal delegation will not have any changes. Ron Kind was reelected to his position mayor for the 3rd congressional district. Now turning to referendums coming out of last Tuesday, voters continued the strong overall support for local school referendums seen in recent elections. According to unofficial results, voters approved 84.3% of the referendums on the ballot, so 43 out of 51 were approved. I'm looking at some of the details, more specifically, 15 of 19 requests to exceed state-imposed revenue limits on a non-reoccurring basis were approved, and this is a 79% passage rate. Nine of 10 requests to exceed state-imposed limits on a reoccurring basis were approved, and this is a 90% passage rate. And 17 of 20 borrowing referendums were approved, including a facilities improvement request in Madison and a similar ask in Oshkosh. The complete listing of results reported to DPI is available on the legislative blog website. On the 5th of November, Republicans met in caucus to select leaders for the 21-22 legislative session that will begin this coming January. Senate Republicans selected Devin Lemahue, I believe it is, to be the next majority leader, and tapped Chris Kapanga of Delafield to be the Senate President. In other leadership races, Dan Fain was reelected Assistant Majority Leader. Patrick Tustin was elected President pro temp. Van Waigard was reelected Caucus Chair, and Kathy Vermeer was elected Caucus Vice Chair. Looking at the 21-22 legislative session, there will be eight new senators when the legislature convenes in January. Seven newcomers will be filling vacant seats, and one newcomer defeated a sitting incumbent. And looking at new faces in the legislature, 16 new members will join the chamber come January. And the last thing I want to note is that'll be interesting to see the composition of the Education Committee with the retirement of Luther Olson, so we'll stay tuned and see how that committee will look going forward.
Thank you for the report, Troy. Next, we can move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, that receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. Could we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Royal?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Next item is unfinished whole business, update discussion on future levy override and bond issue referendum questions, including a community survey being conducted.
Yeah, so, as was indicated in your board update, an email, preemptive email went out to staff, and then a follow-up email from School Perceptions went out to staff. Parent communication via Skylert went out to staff, and you probably have received in your mailbox a paper copy of the survey as well. So, all of the things that were supposed to transpire by today have. Individuals are now, over the next couple of weeks here, invited to complete the survey and provide feedback. I know there's been a few contacts to the district office requesting paper copies to be mailed and some miscellaneous things, but by and large, things have gone quite well. In December, recall, is when we'll have some data to analyze, and we'll be presented with, hopefully, some idea of how we shall proceed come January, when we're statutorily obligated to adopt a resolution or resolutions, if in fact we do proceed. And then, of course, ramping up as appropriate based on the survey responses. So, over the next few weeks here, a lot of things will start to come into focus out of there, and help us decide what route we want to go, or need to go.
Greg, were there any people that wanted to change and get referendum passed that were similar to us, that were successful? Can you remember if there were any?
Oh, well, Auburndale, I'm confident had a, locally, they had a levy override in addition to a bond issue. I think they had two questions on the November ballot, both passed. Wausau had two questions too, both failed up there, however, and I think, you know, in a preliminary sense, without being a member of that community, I don't mean to portray what I, you know, pretend like I know what's going on necessarily 100% of the time, but I think a lot of their circumstance is a result of things that have unfolded in the community and the district since August with regard to the school opening, and their circumstance, I think that exacerbated their situation. But again, by and large, most of them have passed, and Madison, I think, is the largest referendum in state history now for bond issue, $335 million or something along those lines. So, once again, there's, even given the pandemic and other economic factors, there's still a fairly strong appetite for local communities to support their school districts. And frankly, again, we don't know until you see the data from the survey, and hopefully the survey background, you know, portrays this well enough, but the idea that we could do both of these things, we could do the levy override, and we could do the bond issue question, and have little or no impact to the local levy and property taxes, the school portion, is the perfect position to be in. So, you know, it is all about circumstance, and we'll see. I think the timing is right with regard to what the district needs to do financially, but with the pandemic and the virtual closure, that's not to say that there isn't hardships and issues out there. So, so much of what we need to do, I think, does write on the community feedback.
Was the local vote a new record, very strong in the Rapids area?
I'm not 100% certain.
In Ann Arbor Rapids, but statewide, it was a record. I imagine it probably.
Yeah, I didn't hear statistics on that. The only thing with reference to the election that I heard, multiple sources, was there was apparently some kind of a rumor or disinformation that Wood County had run out of ballots, and that was not the case. That was emphasized a number of times.
It was a township in Portage Town.
Oh.
That town of Person? They were talking about it on the news right before I came in, and that this town, and they were talking about the Portage County clerk.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only thing election-related I heard. Oh, well, East was the, it was the election site, the county vote elections.
Half of their ballots were cast prior to, from what I learned through the clerk.
Yeah.
So, a lot of people were not voting in person.
Absentee vote was significant. That was pretty much statewide and nationwide. It came off without a hitch here. I mean, it was busy. There was cars in and out all day long, and people all around, you know, around, but frankly, down here in the district office, we didn't really even have a clue anything was going on unless we went outside and saw that there's bunch of cars here, so.
We had more visits from early voters.
What's that?
We had more visits from early voters.
We did, thinking that they could come here and vote.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then we, of course, steered in the right direction, but, yeah, I mean, by and large, things in town went pretty smooth. I know Grand Rapids coming through, they had a line on occasion. I don't recall ever seeing a line here, just because they have so many voting issues.
By 10:00 to 7:00 going to work, there'd already been a line of 48 people in line.
Was there?
It's 10:00 to 7:00 in the morning.
Yeah, and I left the house prior to that.
To answer your question, I haven't seen at least 10, 10 to 12 of the similar type of referendum things that we're doing, where asking for the issue debt and then have the non-referring.
Yeah, there was multiple.
And the only one that didn't pass was Wausau. Everything else looks like it passed.
Okay, thank you. Move on to new business. The first item, possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests. Right, Maureen?
Non-referring.
Okay. Our next item, discussion and possible action to approve district's health insurance carrier proposed renewal and to continue current employee health savings account contributions.
Right, so, as was indicated in your board background information, we had been with Security Health Plan since last January, and the recommendation is to approve, once again, or renew our contract with Security Health Plan at a 0% change, which is nearly unheard of for our organization and many others. We pushed hard for a negative renewal. We were searching for that, you know, a little bit, get what you can while you can, but the idea of not having to change, not having to shop the market, some stability for our employees and staff, and, you know, locking in a 0% is, like I said, nearly unheard of. We'll see if we reap the benefits or the consequences next year, but we take what we can get, what we can get, and the recommendation would be to approve the same, so basically everything rolls over, including premiums. Nothing changes for our people, nothing changes for the board. It's basically carbon copy of this past year into '21, which is a great spot to be in. Dan and the budget, just for reference, had projected, I believe, a 3% increase in insurance, so those are some dollars that we will have access to for other needs, of course, throughout the term of the budget, so it's a great spot to be in.
And I'd gladly make a motion to approve the health insurance renewal plan effective January 1, 2021, from Security Health at a renewal rate of 0%, and to continue employer contribution to eligible district employees' health savings accounts in the amount of $1,500 for employees carrying a single plan and $3,000 for employees carrying a family plan.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the health insurance renewal plan effective January 1, 2021, from Security Health at a renewal rate of 0%, and to continue the employer contribution to eligible district employee health savings accounts in an amount of $1,500 for employees carrying a single plan and $3,000 for employees carrying a family plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Last item on our agenda is discussion and possible action to approve of a front managed services contract.
We'll turn it over to Phil.
All right. It's been a long, long time since we've been reviewing this stuff, and we've got to this day where we have to make a decision now. Probably received a number of stuff over the weekend from Maureen, and hopefully you got a chance to read through it, and hopefully you could follow it. There was a lot of information there to probably digest. The sheet, I guess I'll draw your attention to, is this kind of this 11 by 17 sheet, and I want to clarify a couple of things on that big sheet. There's three columns that are pink, and one of them is from E.O. Johnson, and that's an annual cost, or annual proposal that I put together. I mean, annual means we pay one time a year. We pay the, you know, we don't pay monthly, we pay it one time a year. And then Marco put together a proposal, that's also highlighted in pink there, and then we also had a proposal from Ryan. The reason I draw your attention to those columns that are pink is because those are apples-to-apples comparisons. Those are fairly, pretty much the same proposals. As we worked through these with the different vendors, everybody kind of had their own spin to how they did this, and have different things they include, different things they don't include. So, we really, my team, along with Maureen, we did a lot of work in going through this entire project, and then looking at all this. entire project and then looking at all the things that, every little thing of the contracts that they have, you know, right on down to the type of machine, to the toner, the paper cut that we looked at, all sorts of different things that we looked at, trying to make sure we're covering all of our bases. And in the end, after we went through everything, E.O. Johnson's proposal for the annual proposal seemed to be the best fit for us. We currently have E.O. Johnson, we've currently worked with him, as you've read in the background for over 10 years. They've been very good to work with, we haven't had any issues with them. You know, there's no reason for us really to switch any of our vendors at this time, or to a different vendor at this time. There really was nothing that brought them, and honestly, they had the best price proposal. So, really, when you put those things all together, it made the most sense. That's where our staff are comfortable with, and we looked at a lot of different things, pros and cons, and a lot of these companies, honestly, are very similar to what they do. So, having prior experience with them was a pro for us. Marco, we've never worked with them before, they're out of state company, so we kind of use that as a factor to say, okay, we're not going to go with Marco because they're not in-state. We use that kind of as our differential layer. And then Rhyme is, obviously, they were a little bit more, they were more money for the same proposal, so. I don't know if there's questions that you have as you look at all this?
What is paper cut?
Paper cut is a software that runs on all the printers and printers to monitor the number of prints that people are printing, kind of do quotas. It allows us to release prints from different locations, follow me. It's a software that we use.
So you can put your, you put your code in, and then you write stuff?
Yeah. I mean, if it's included there, you're looking at $11,000 and then $12,000, that's substantial statement. Sounds like a good decision. I would approve entering into a five-year print managed services contract with E.O. Johnson, under the proposed annual payment option effective January 1, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve entering into a five-year print managed services contract with E.O. Johnson, under the proposed annual payment option effective January 1, 2021. We have a vote, please.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Looking at our calendar, we have a closed session meeting on the 16th, next week, and that is it for the month.
Can we talk about convention?
Oh, sure, sure.
And I just mentioned to Maureen that it's being, it's all virtual. So I asked her if, because I'm the WASB delegate assembly, I said, hey, I'm hoping they'll let me do that without registering to pay $240 just to do the assembly. So, I think that's a little steep for virtuals. I mean, and I foresee a lot of technology issues.
It's a long time to sit in front of a computer.
Well, that's the other thing, is the cost of it, so I'm not sure if it's, if the value is there this year, because, I mean, attending in person, you get to hear everybody. I mean, sometimes you don't have the computer hookup to get the, the orders on there. I don't think they're going to have like a multiple-person page, it'll probably just be a presentation. I don't think it's going to be interactive, so, I mean, it's going to be.
Might be via chat features. I, admittedly, right, admittedly, they pared down, I don't know if you took a chance to look at it, but they pared down really what the options are. They went with, you know, three keynote speakers, as it were, that I think that people might want to hear more based off of interest versus more business sort of, you see what I'm saying? Great, this, one of the guys is a Packer.
Donald Driver.
Donald Driver, which would be awesome, but I don't know if it's worth 240 bucks. And the interface, the virtual interface for most of what I think is effective with regard to the convention is lost. I think that makes it difficult, and I'm sure you'll be able to chat, I'm sure you'd be able to, there'd be some kind of interaction, but I think the limitation is your ability to network with colleagues from other districts, ask, you know, questions on the fly, as it were, and as you indicate, I think 240 per person is pretty steep to engage in a virtual conference. But if we know, if you're interested, we can absolutely, you know, let Maureen know, we can absolutely get people registered, but I think it does make sense to at least ask them whether or not being part of the delegate assembly would warrant a complete, you know, one-person registration or some other kind of reduced rate that he can, our district can participate in that capacity. So, we'll get that question answered.
Because I have a feeling a lot of districts would be the same way, it's like, oh, we're not paying $240 just to do that.
Yeah, I think you could, you know, conceivably all agree that you're going to sit somewhere as a group or a handful and all watch the same thing at the same time. I mean, there's districts that are going to probably do some things with regard to the, to the approach, but my personal opinion is that you're taking vacation, which most of you are, or you're taking time away from your grandkids, or whatever the case may be, to spend $240 to watch videos of people presenting, I just, I, it's, you know, admittedly, it's going to be a tough interface. It's going to be a tough interface. And I would argue too, if there's anything that comes about, they'll have access to it after the fact, and we could even pay at the time and access information that we want to access, you know, downloadable, so you can do it on a Sunday or a Saturday or 3 o'clock in the morning when you can't sleep kind of thing too, so I'm sure that option will be there.
Do they still plan on pulling the delegate assembly on the meeting?
Yeah. Well, it's what it says here, I haven't, we haven't got any information on it. I find it hard to pay $240 just to do that. It's pretty steep.
I agree.
I would not want to waste the district's money on that.
We'll find out.
If there's nothing else, then we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.